Right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November twentieth twenty five joint work session between the Planning Commission and the City Council regarding commercial zoning. So who wants to kick this off? For me, staff.
All right, we had several council members request to have a work session regarding some commercial zoning, and I think looking at the zoning map and just seeing if, I think what discussion that council wanted to have, I know council member Jones was one of the ones that really wanted to have this discussion.
Yeah, and I could kind of fill it in then. I think, folks, this came from a particular planning action, a request from a property owner to change their zone, and it was a UR. And so I, in this particular case, I think Commissioner Lee, Commissioner Brown's RU, had voted against the change and actually were considering a different zone. I think like a neighborhood commercials or something that was more residential oriented, and I thought it was a great idea. So I wanted to have a conversation about basically creating a transition zone between the UR and CBD. So we're not taking what are really residential properties and turning them into anything, you know, what a CBD is. So that's the gist of it.
Thank you, George. All right. Before us, we have Title eighteen, Purpose of Each Zoning District defined for us. We also have a map, the zoning map, so that we can refer to that. I, I see that the, one of the things that this was brought forward for, as you said, was in reaction to a recent rezoning. And I think in order to not, the council and, and staff and, and all of us to not, say, abuse this, or to have this be a segue to the next lot and the next lot, or the next property, or the next property that becomes contiguous to a, a commercial zone, and that become chronic. I think we wanted to just review our zoning, the purpose of each zoning districts, district, and the definition of each one of those, and maybe find a way to tighten things up and maybe clean things up if it was, if we found it to be necessary. So Erin, is there anything you would like to add to that? Am I missing something?
No, I didn't have anything extra on that one.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, I'd throw a little bit more in there, a little color. If you, if you look at the map.
Just a second, George, if you would, staff would like to inject something for us, please.
I was gonna say, I also, because I wasn't quite sure what to have prepared. I also have another handout for you. When last, what, thank you CJ, at the last Planning Commission meeting, when I was talking with the Planning Commission about attending this work session, it was brought up that they wanted to make sure council was aware that as part of the code update project, they had looked at the intent of every single one of those zone districts. So the handout CJ is now giving you each has the current language in our regulations, and then underlined after it is what the Planning Commission had settled on through their reviews. There are not large changes, because we really, as part of this project, is restructuring the regulations and not really, are trying to avoid diving into the meat behind things. So if there is other things that you want to have happen, depending upon where things go, that may be a subsequent project. But for your purposes tonight, especially if you're wanting to revisit the intent of these zone districts, it may be helpful to see the direction that Planning Commission is going. So that's all I have for you.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, and, yeah, on your, your, your handout, the zoning map is on one side, and then from the comprehensive plan, the backside of that is a copy of the future land use map. So that particular map, in developing that, there was actually a very conservative approach that was taken. So the desired uses really mirror the current zoning districts. There's not a lot of deviation there. So it's one of the tools that council has for evaluating changes. So that's what you have in front of you for your handouts.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Go ahead, George.
Yeah, so what I, what I was, I think what the concern was, and Mayor Case, you kind of framed it, started the conversation, I think, was this kind of creep or leakage of CBD, because one of the things we were trying to avoid, I believe, was spot zoning. But if you look at to the north of CBD and to the east of CBD, we have neighborhood commercial, and we have a community commercial. And they kind of act as a transition zone, if you will, from the, the heavy residential UR SR to CBD. But to the east, or yeah, to the south and the west, we don't have that. So the, you know, I think Commissioner Brown, it was kind of, it was really interesting reading the minutes from the planning meeting, and I was, I was very interested in seeing if, if we could get to a neighborhood commercial, or possibly a community commercial, kind of transition zone, so that the UR isn't, you know, we're, we're not just taking this one color, light blue, CBD, and saying, well, that's what's next to, you know, that, this yellow block is next to this light blue block, and so I need to turn that light blue, right? If we wanted to change a zone. So that's what I was looking at, hoping to accomplish. And then i- if we were in agreement, then the question would be, and I think this is more of a legal question, or Karen's question, would be, how do we do that? And, you know, is it in one fell swoop? Is it, you know, by policy, we're gonna, we were gonna, let's, let's build that transition boundary, but we don't have to implement it right away. It could just be as, as, you know, units are sold, or something like that.
Let me comment, I wasn't.
Go ahead.
I'm not prepared, not really knowing what the subject of the meeting exactly was tonight. My reason for differing from the rest of the Planning Commission was that I thought the CBD district was wrong for the area. Among the key things that goes on, instead of a twenty-five-foot setback, as would be the case in residential, or in the neighborhood commercial, or community commercial, it's ten feet.
Right.
And the whole, the whole, all the buildings there are built with a twenty-five-foot setback. Either if it was a commercial use, neighborhood commercials seem to fit quite well, and I don't think people on the Planning Commission really disagreed with my view or with your view. It was simply that we couldn't spot zone, and thus, we had, we had no alternative. It seemed that there's a couple of lots adjacent to the one we were looking at, which had also been CBD, and it was pretty clear.
They're not.
I don't have to go do a, write a review of the history. Clearly, somebody wanted a commercial right next to the CBD, so they baited another CBD to, to avoid a spot zoning. Well, if you keep, if you go one at a time, and you say you never have a spot zone, then you can never transition.
Right.
If it's part of a, and our attorney and our planning director can comment more on this, but if it's part of a concept of allowing transition, it seems to me you could put a, a lot or two with, with a given zone, with the idea that furthered, furthered commercial development would expand that transitional area. Because I'm not sure you needed another zone, neighborhood commercial, transitional. We already have neighborhood commercial, and it seems to fit what's there.
I would agree, and, and it was interesting, because the, the property owners of that particular lot, they had another piece of property that was also zoned CBD, but it is, it is clearly, it, it is a residence. It looks like a house, right? So, which, which this one does too, and then across the street is another CBD-zoned property that looks like a house. You know, it's, it was at one point a residence, I'm quite certain, I don't know the history, but. So it would be interesting to, again, find a way to create that transition zone similar to the north and the east of CBD, so that CBD just doesn't, as Mayor Case pointed out, doesn't just keep creeping into the neighborhoods.
So my, so my suggestion is to consider that if a neighborhood commercial zone could be used, even if it's only one lot, if it's part of a plan that says that commercial development, if any, that starts to occur moving into these, some of these UR areas, can be with a neighborhood commercial district, doesn't have to be UR or CBD or nothing. Because, you know, it's, we are, we're dealing with an existing set of land uses. You can't move them all at one time. We, I think there's some trends that will happen over the long term. But we need to be able to allow that, allow that to happen without jumping to CBD, which is just, seems wrong for these houses, and it seems wrong for the area and the streets and everything else, it's not designed as a CBD.
I agree.
So Mayor?
Yes, please, and I, please, let's make this conversational. This is a work session, and I, I don't really need to acknowledge you. Please, just be respectful, and if you all would like to just dialogue, that'd be great.
Okay, so I think I can adequately address what you are talking about. In doing a comprehensive plan, that's the community's opportunity to look at, what do we want to be in the next ten years? How do we want to grow and evolve? What are the policies, goals, and objectives associated with getting there? One of those things is that tool, the future land use map. So regardless of what the current zoning is, if you look at the property, and it's like, how do we want to grow and develop? What uses do we want to see in certain locations? So another community may be in a similar situation, and would look at this area and go, wait, this isn't quite right, we don't like that this is zoned this way, so we know that this area is moving and changing. So let's flag this in terms of, hey, we really want this area to develop into some type of commercial use. Then you go and, after the, the plan is adopted, because at that point, that should ideally be flagged as, as red, then you're actually doing a more, a red, which is the commercial zone. Yeah, on the, on the future land use map. Then you're doing a more in-depth study and analysis, of which you guys are all referencing here in terms of, what is the current zoning? What is the current use of that property? So when you look at that, that more detailed analysis, you may determine that, while this area is under pressure, yes, we do want to incentivize commercial development at this area, and look, that then becomes the tools for doing a legislative rezoning, which is where the council initiates this, and it involves multiple properties to adjust or change what's going on there, and change that zoning district. As opposed to a more conservative, private property rights orientation of where council just reviews quasi-judicial requests from individual landowners one at a time. So there is a way to get to doing a legislative rezoning, but that involves other tools and analysis, and having a clear direction with where you're wanting to go. Right now, when you look at your future land use map, since it was set up to mirror the zoning map, it actually says, we want this area to be residential. So that's what that map says, but through that public hearing, this particular property, Planning Commission made a different recommendation, and council ultimately made a different decision.
But to be fair, the, the, the direction came from the planning department first.
We gave a split recommendation, where if, and I can't.
But there was no option on the zone. It was, it wasn't whether or not it converts, it was what it, what does it convert to?
And that's because, under state law, you cannot do the spot zoning, so the only option was what was next to it. If this property was completely surrounded by other residentially zoned property, you would have seen a hard no recommendation from staff, saying, no, you don't want to take one part, or staff recommends not taking one piece in the middle of a, a residentially zoned area and changing that zone district to a commercial designation. The recommendation would have been, keep it as the UR zone. But because it's on this border, there was that potential, should Planning Commission and council decide to change it to a commercial designation, but the option was what was right next to it.
And, and so there's no option to, you, you couldn't have said, well, look, we've got, we've got commercial, neighborhood commercial and community commercial surrounding CBD. It seems to me, it could have been a very, not a spot zone thing, but an intentional act to go to an NC designation.
I have no, I'm not aware of any tools that we currently have in place that would support that. What we had to work with was what was brought to you.
So and, and keep in mind, council, too, that, that the, the appropriate time and place, and I, I don't want to caution you or limit the discussion, but the appropriate time and place to address all these different zoning modifications or updates would be during a comp plan process, which our next time will be for the 2040 comp plan being done in 2030. So that's, that's a time when we can look at everything and massage, like we've done in the past with comp plans.
Can I just add also about the instant application we're talking about? That was a private property owner, and, and obviously, they do consult with the Planning Department if, if, if they're, anyway, they, they made the application to change their zone district from A to B. You, it could have been voted up or down, but that, they are, they are the application, they made the application for the property.
But they didn't, they didn't designate CBD. They just said they were looking for more of a commercial designation. I don't even know, when we asked them, they didn't even, they had no idea what that was.
The purpose of the zoning change is that they can maintain their short-term rental.
Exactly. It was a commercial.
To maintain their commercial use.
Angle, yeah. Yeah.
They'd had no aspirations of developing the property further at this time.
Right, they don't, but the next owner can, right? And that, that's, I think, the, where, where that, I think, Commissioner Brown, where you were going, and, and I was going, was their needs, they're, really with those residences, because they're homes, they really need to have some kind of protection, and the, in the URs, they're need to have some kind of protection from that, the potential for a grease monkey, or, or a bar, right, going in, so.
We, we asked that question during the planning permission, we, could we actually put a condition on the zone changes that would restrict this property to be used for church or rent? And that you can't do that, according to the statute.
Right.
And also, just to echo what Ken said, that we realize that, we look at every, every site individually, every, everyone, every application that comes before us doesn't set a precedent for the next, we will look at it as an individual case. In this, in this particular case, I think we'll convince majority of the Planning Commission to offer this recommendation, is that these people had this short-term rental use already in place prior to the recent change in the zoning code, to allow zones. And we sympathized with, with the owners, saying, you lost the use that you had through this zoning change previously, and we think it's appropriate at this time, for this one particular instance, look at this as being, this is the only avenue you have to change it to a CBD to allow you to continue to use.
Commercial use, right. Yeah, I understand, but I, I think if you, again, if you look at the, the property, and the properties that, the, and the residential properties around it, they, they don't look like a commercial building, right? It looks like a residence.
Yes.
And so, in, in that, I think in that light, it, it, to me, it's not necessarily spot zone, I, I, I'm not a lawyer, but to me, you can make a case to say, that, that should be neighborhood commercial.
So if we had a, in the future land use plan, that that was intended to go to a commercial use, but maybe not, had not yet been rezoned, then it'd be consistent with the plan, and I'm kind of asking, would that then cover the spot use concern? It may only be the first, but it's the first of an intentional movement.
It's an, that, yeah, it's an interesting.
So I could interrupt just for a second. Ken Kennedy is with us on Zoom, so Ken, I would like to invite you to inject yourself, if you have comments, and don't wait to be called on, please.
Sure, no problem, thank you.
Thank you. I'm, go ahead, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Well, no, but the, so Don, or Commissioner Hoying is bringing up a good point. If you look at the land use, which was referenced as a guide, as a tool, it says residential, not commercial business district.
The other.
How was it that we made a residential use into the most intensive commercial use possible? Because, because it would be spot zoning to have a moderately intensive use instead. Doesn't, doesn't, there, there has to be an appropriate, appropriate way to do this. It doesn't involve waiting for five to six years till we do another comprehensive plan.
Well, I mean, there, I don't think there's a limitation on updating the comprehensive plan, that's just the, the normal rhythm of it. There's no restriction on doing it sooner or out of cycle.
That is correct.
We, we obviously weren't following the comprehensive plan when we made this area CBD.
Right, I would agree.
But, but back to, if, if we, in the comprehensive plan, if we envisioned that going to a commercial use, then I, I'm just putting out there, then one could argue that that's not spot zoning, because it may be the first, but it's the first of an intentional movement in that direction.
Of course, that was, that was my argument, um, a couple of months ago when this came up.
From a statute perspective, Nina, how does the state define spot zoning?
And I'll let Karen introduce, yeah, Karen injects, um, gen- oh, here you go. Generally, it's, you know, like Karen said, you have your master plan or your comprehensive plan, that's identified in statute, that, then you have your future land use map, and if you're looking at one particular property that is different from everything else, and different, and deviates from that comprehensive plan, that master plan, in, in such a way as to just be kind of standalone, then that could eventually be to itemize as a, as a spot zoning pursuant to statute and pursuant to case law. I don't have anything else you want to add? But, um, yeah, it's good.
I mean, so like with what Commissioner Hoying was talking about, is there, if, if we said, okay, there's, there should be this transition zone, and, and we were intentional about that, that, you know, three hundred, I don't know what it would be, a hundred yards off of CBD, or something like that, we were intentional about it, and we declared that, so we couldn't do it in a QJ session, I knew that.
Yes.
But if we're, if, again, we're intentional about putting a transition zone around CBD, would that be considered, then, then when planning, an individual landowner came before planning, and they said, nope, that's got to be neighborhood commercial, would that be considered spot zoning?
No, it, but just to add to what Karen was saying, is you'd want, you, you would want to, and you can do it anytime, you would want to look at your comp plan and look at the future land use map, so that it corresponds with exactly what you're saying. So there's that roadmap, so that you could, and again, that can be done at any time, and you could also have the option, I think what you're alluding to, is that you have this, this zone, that even if it's not, any properties have that zone district yet, if people could pull from it, and then your future land use map shows that you're, you're indicating the peripheral properties in, in a specific area, that, that should be that transitional zoning. So that's all, it, the idea is that, you know, you're, you're planning from a thirty thousand foot, which is what you're alluding to, is, and then, once you have those documents in place, that, because that's what you're saying as a city you want to see, then that substantiates the, you know, when, when rezones come in front of you, because that's what you had wanted to see as a, as a prop, as a city, and then the property owners are on notice, and.
I think, I think that's a great point. So I think what it is, is giving the planning department first a tool, if you will, to go by to say, okay, this, this landowner has come before us, wants to change to a commercial, but they're in this kind of residence area, so somehow or another, you, you, we, you would draw on this tool to say, well, that's got to be neighborhood commercial.
The tool we had said it's supposed to be residential.
Right.
So if you're wanting to do a more in-depth analysis and evaluation of the city, or a sub, sub-area of the city, that really is a study where you look at parcel by parcel, what is the current use and the current zoning versus what is it we desire to have happen there? So through that analysis and a, a public outreach and adoption process, then you get to a sub-area plan that says, this is what we want to do in this particular area.
Okay.
So it gives you a greater degree of detail and attention to what's going on at that particular location. Right now, something that, that really strikes me that you all are talking about is the other uses in that area. Somebody else could easily argue with you that they're incorrectly zoned, and probably should be a residential zone based on the residential use on those lots.
I would agree. I, I would agree, that would be a fine argument, but not CBD, they, you know, cha- changing them to CBD.
Well, I'm talking about the pieces that already are CBD with a residential use on them. You, you mentioned right across the street, there's, there's already something, a cou- couple of them in place that way.
Yeah, I mean, it, it would be, if I, if I had intention, it would be my intention to say, those should be neighborhood commercial, those, or even UR, you know, not CBD. Because really, and I think that's the biggest thing that I read from the minutes from Commissioner Brown's attempt during that planning thing, I think the biggest thing was to stop that creep of CBD into the resident, into the neighborhoods.
So there's one other concept, or, or point I'd like to throw on the table for you all to contemplate, and I find it very interesting that Woodland Park's zoning regulations are set up in such a way that it allows single-family homes and duplexes within some of your commercial zone districts. I, other places I have worked, I have not had that in place. So if there was a house in something that was now zoned commercial, it's because it was there long before the zoning district was set in place. The fact that Woodland Park actively allows properties to be developed with single-family homes and duplexes in commercial zones is very interesting, and I question whether or not that is undermining your intent of these commercial zones.
And you know, Karen, that comes all the way back to the initial zoning regulations that were developed back in nineteen eighty, in the early twenties, where there was a pyramid that i- in the residential zone, you'd have single-family homes or residents, then you'd have a progressive, progression, and each of those would allow the previous zone uses, and they would pyramid down all the way to industrial, and they would have them on there too. And that, that's how the initial zoning enablement act came into place, and that was a compromise, and many of the communities adopted that, and Woodland Park did so, followed that suit. And that's the reason we have. Whether it's running on, probably not, right?
But we, we would still, like downtown, are you talking about like downtown, main, you know, in the CBD?
I am talking about neighborhood commercial, community commercial.
Yeah.
And CBD zone districts.
Right, and there's homes in there.
The fact that we allow new ones to be developed.
Yeah.
Is interesting to me.
And that was actually a two thousand sixteen ordinance, so that wasn't, you know, that long ago, that allows that change in use process, that's an administrative process that the planning department goes through, it's a, you know, public notice process, and if anyone from the public comes forward, if the developer and the public can't work something out, then it goes to you guys.
So.
So, but that was from two thousand sixteen, that allows that duplex or, uh, single-family home in the commercial zone district.
And you know, when, when we looked at it, and Lee did his best to convince the rest of us to follow suit, and we tried to argue with Lee that he ought to join us and say, we have a request for a CBD zone district on, on this property, and that's the only zoning district that allows short-term rentals.
No.
Not, not a neighborhood commercial, well.
Yeah, neighborhood commercial does.
Yeah.
Neighborhood commercial does not short-term rent. I'm sorry, you're right.
But it's not even about the STR thing, I think it's just commercial use, right? There's some kind of commercial use, but that property with its setbacks, and with the building that's sitting on it, is really residential, and it just seems like that is more appropriate. And, and there's others, you know, as we've all pointed out, that there.
For clarification, that, that property seems to be residential, and a commercial use is appropriate for that residentially appearing property?
But if you look at neighborhood commercial, it's, it's the type of commercial use, I'm just not, I'm not limiting it to STRs. I'm just saying.
It's a less intensive commercial use, it doesn't involve McDonald's with long waiting lines of automobiles piled up, it doesn't have gas stations and such, instead, it could be a small retail shop.
Yeah, and yes, that.
More, that's.
Less intensive is, I think, a great way to put it.
So I would actually ask to transition to look at the current purpose of the neighborhood commercial district, that handout.
So I'm going to interrupt again.
So I'm going to interrupt again, and we can continue, but I'm going to leave it up to you all to decide. We have dinner ready. Um, we could take five minutes and everyone gets something to eat and then start this new conversation. Is that acceptable, or do you want to keep going and do it?
Second motion.
Alright. Um, and, and I'm, just as you want to go. Thank you for your patience, everyone. Again? Thank you. Alright, we're going to resume the conversation.
And so uh, where we left off is I was drawing your attention to the intent of the commercial zone districts on that handout in front of you. And we have um basically four residential zones. Um, neighborhood commercial, community commercial, service commercial, and central business district. Of those four zone districts, it is only within the central business district that that purpose statement includes any mention of residential uses. And it's at the end of the CBD purpose where it says residential activity is appropriate in this area, particularly at second or third story levels above offices or commercial shops. So what that is describing is a more typical downtown environment where you've got street-level commercial retail and residential uses are placed above that. Your other commercial zone districts, those purpose statements talk about being adjacent to residential, but they do not talk about um incorporating residential uses in the intent of those zone districts.
But we do have, as CJ pointed out, there's, in twenty sixteen, we allowed that.
City council did through the adoption of that ordinance change at that time. Um, if you're a very conservative, traditional planner and very hardcore perspective on separating uses, um, it's reasonable to question the wisdom of that choice, direction, and change.
But it is what it is.
It's what you have in place now.
It certainly has, has been the, the time to review zone districts as a whole. There's about the things where it's, it's kind of separate.
If you're evaluating um existing uses, zone districts, and what you desire in the future, yes.
Oh, that basis build districts, and we also have overlay districts. Why don't we consider an overlay district that's called transitional? And in that transitional overlay, you don't, you, 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 you put that on it, overlay for properties that are adjacent to, there's old residential, old commercial, next to, and so on and so forth, and vice versa. Then you, you look at that from that whole view. And through that overlay process, and just from a patient like that, then you can say, you're in the following sections that we could look at.
In that overlay district?
That maybe, maybe sometimes, sometimes it does. You know, you, or it could be, you'd have a third point fix. So it's, it's possible. Well, I mean, there, there's certainly a possibility. There's just an idea that you do for.
So is, would that be like a conditional use? Would that be another way to scratch at that?
Sort of like, yes, yes.
Good.
So what, what do we as council need to do to further this along? Because I, 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 I feel like there's some, I don't know if it's consensus necessarily, but there's some form of
Suggest something?
What's that?
I'm sorry, George, I don't have a way to wave at you, but.
Ken, go ahead.
This is, this can, so I'd like to make a comment. So um George's original comment about transition zone or something that's less severe is a big jump from any residential zone to the uh, central business district zone. It seems to me like if we could somehow word our zoning information into two categories, where we have residential and then flavors of those zones and commercial and flavors of those zones. And the spot zoning issue that came up that pushed us towards putting it in CBD this time, uh, wouldn't be an issue as long as it's commercial to commercial, you know, adjacency or residential to residential adjacency. And then we have like a predefined transition area that may or may not exist, because some of these are already pre-planned. But if we just, if, if um Karen would have said, it doesn't matter what commercial zone you select, it won't be spot zoning because it's commercial against commercial. It's not in the middle and completely surrounded by residential. If we could have looked at it that way, we'd have all picked a neighborhood commercial or something like that. We just felt like because of however our rules and language is, it would look like spot zoning. So my suggestion would be that we ask the attorneys if we could structure our zones in such a way that if we put neighborhood commercial next to uh, CBD, that wouldn't be considered spot zoning because it's commercial to commercial.
So real quick.
If, if we could get it reviewed like that.
So in my understanding, and I'll defer to Nina here in a moment, but my understanding is each zone district is t- treated distinctly as opposed to a broad category of commercial, and any of these commercials can go next to a commercial. Uh, so a- again, they're, they're treated distinctly, which is why selecting one parcel to be neighborhood commercial um surrounded by even a bunch of CBD, it's still considered a spot zone. So Nina?
Yes, I, I agree, Karen. Um, the first thing I just want to acknowledge from the outset is that this is, we're in this kind of unique cir- circumstance, because I know you're looking at this more generally, but we were put into the situation because the SDR ordinance and that kind of thing, that kind of, we were trying to make what I call some of the least worst option, right, pushing it, you're probably pushing a square peg into a round hole. But yes, spot zoning, um, there, you, it, you have a mast, and I'm looking at right now, which is a really good explanation, Colorado Land Planning and Development Law Book. Um, so you have your comprehensive plan, which is called the master plan, the statutes. Um, and there's, yeah, there's different zoning districts, like Karen said, there's a purpose for different zoning districts and different future, you know, uh, future land use map or a, or a comprehensive plan has those different zone districts. I- i- in the scenario that you, just to kind of explain, the, the scenario that you uh, pointed out still would be spot zoning, because spot zoning is anything that's kind of just taking a specific parcel that's inconsistent with the surrounding area. It's inconsistent with your zoning map. It's inconsistent with your comp plan, and it's inconsistent with your future land use map. Um, so I, I appreciate the creativity, but that would still um be spot zoning, because you, you, you have, unless you had less zoning districts, which I don't think you want to do. You want to have these specialized zoning districts for, for certain um reasons.
So again, turning it CBD actually met some of the criteria you just talked about. Because it is against the comp plan.
The specific situation would never have come before you if it wasn't for the initiate ordinance, which we all know, right? So it's, it, it was a difficult situation. I think, I mean, that's why staff didn't even ma- Did you make a recommendation? They didn't, staff, staff didn't make a recommendation.
I know, but it, that's okay. I'm not, I'm just using that as, as a, an example of the potential damage that can happen here.
You're using the right line of thought, yeah. Everything you're saying seems the right line philosophically.
Yeah, so I think uh, whether it's an overlay or um, we strike the comp plan or, you know, update the comp plan right away. Um, there's, there is a, this potential, I don't want to, it's not an emergency, but there are properties there that sit in a residential neighborhood. That could go any direction. And I, I do think that it needs, that needs to be addressed.
Will those be addressed as a group?
Could you please use your microphone? Thank you.
Can some of those be, those lots in the area be addressed as a group, looked at as needing a commercial usage but less intensive than CBD? Look at rezone multiple lots at one time, perhaps in connection with uh, review or update of the comprehensive plan to indicate the desire to, without, not trying to map all the particular lots, the desire to have uh, transitional, less intensive use by the CBD where that seems to be where the development goes.
I would actually suggest um looking at a little broader area in and around uh, the existing CBD zone, the entire CBD zone, and doing a sub-area plan, because you've got one piece where this has clearly occurred. Um, you know, south of Highway twenty-four, but there's other parcels potentially north of Highway twenty-four that are going to be in a similar situation. So I think it needs to be looked at more holistically. And what radius beyond that CBD zone, I cannot answer off the cuff. We would need to look at what is going on in that area. What are the current uses? What's the zoning? Are they in an alignment? So there is a, an initial assessment that happens as part of um, stepping into doing a sub-area plan. Um, and I say sub-area because you, there's other parts of the community as a whole you're comfortable with in this aspirational document. So we've narrowed it down to this is the area that we have concerns with and think needs a deeper dive. That's what I'm hearing from you all.
Mm-hmm, yes, absolutely.
To, to kind of add more context, do we feel there's a pressure to develop more of these currently residential zones into a commercial use? Or an aspiration?
No, I don't feel like, I mean, if you're talking to me directly.
I'm sorry, you, because you brought it up, but.
No, I don't, I don't feel like there's a pressure. Um, of, of the URs wanting to go to commercial, no. I don't think that's there. I think the, the, if there's urgency, it's that you have these CBD now zoned properties that could become a gas station on a corner, right next to, you know, residents, which it's just. So, yeah, there, uh, in my mind, there's, there's, there's a need to address it, which is why I'm thankful that we were able to pull everybody together here today. So thanks to everyone, including city staff. So we, I think we need to address it, because we've, we've kind of let some of these pieces go, right? And they're sitting out there. And they could be anything.
I like the idea of embracing Karen's suggestion about the overall policy. Centering in the CBD, looking at the perimeter, looking at it from that point of view. Because as you do that, you're going to be coming up with these questions. What if? What if this? You, you'd be able to think those things through, and then the analysis could naturally just say, okay, to address that concern, we need, we have several things that can take care of. So I think that's the, the right way to go. But I also would ask city council, let's get the uh, the Uniform Development Code done first before we jump into another.
Oh, you're talking about the, yeah, the updates that you're trying to get through, yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that. I we haven't necessarily heard from our, our uh, our expert um, in this, in this space, but, but I, I, I do think, you know, Karen, you're, you're right, at least in the intent um, to create something like that, to look at, and actually, and do the work, you know, the, to look at the land use around CBD and, and try to find a way to contain that would be something at least I'd like to see.
Catherine, do you have anything to share?
I know you do. I can, I can feel it from it.
Um, I mean, I don't, I don't see there's a big urgency either. Um, and I, and I share with you, I share the concern, not so much of the lot we just, or you all just um rezoned, it's the, any of these CBD properties could, that had a house on them could become a gas station. Well, I don't actually think they'd come a gas station, but they could become a bar or a restaurant.
Anything, as Lee said, in the tent.
Store, car sales. So I agree. Um, I just don't know the best mechanism to decide how to do it other than the comp plan. Because I think that, that gets, that brings in the community as a whole to say, yes, we should leave these as CBD, or no, we should make these now neighborhood commercial in some states UR, right? So it's, I just don't think it's something the fourteen of us should decide. Um, is where I'm coming from.
I, I think Karen brought up a great point, though. If you, if we did land use, you know, look at the land use.
And then, yeah, and I, and I think that's a, it's, it's kind of similar to doing the comp plan-ish.
Yeah, but a sub.
You would still get neighborhood buy-in, or you'd get community buy-in through it. So I don't think it's something we would just do.
A sub-area plan is very similar to a comprehensive plan in terms of public outreach um, and adoption. Uh, it is just for a more, a smaller, more specific defined portion of the city, but it's still same process.
Yeah, and I, for me, I guess the biggest thing is I just want community buy-in. I don't want to just
Absolutely. Yeah, no, no, yeah.
And whatever the community decides is what we, you know, we do. So that's where.
Yep. So after, after you get your um, adoption, your formal adoption of all your changes, it would, I think of the, the sub-area plan, if, if we're all in agreement, would be a next, nice next step. Um, at least to start addressing it and kind of, uh, my hope would be we get to a sort of a cleanup, you know, and, and, and citizen-driven. I mean, I'd think, I think the neighbors, the folks who live in those UR, in that UR zone would be very interested in understanding what would be happening and what the potential, if we did nothing, what the potential could be.
And they may be fine with doing nothing. You don't know. I mean, it, so I said, you got to get the buy-in from certainly tho- certainly those property owners.
Yeah, yeah, yep, I agree.
The tricky part is that they may want it to stay UR.
They might.
And not want any change, which could complicate this whole conversation, right?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that it would complicate it. I think it would provide the clarity that everybody is looking for.
Yeah.
You, when you, when you go out and you ask the general public or a community, what is, you like to see? Um, we've all been there before, where you got to be prepared for that answer to be different than what you're thinking.
Yeah, and.
And I think to the point, the, the public dictating largely what we do is in the best interest of everyone. And then they get that opportunity to say, again, if you look at the one we just rezoned, um, one of the concerns I had at the time was, um, you know, the, while I supported the rezoning, the, the, the feel of the spot didn't fit with what we were asked to do. And while I understand that the surrounding property owners had an opportunity to comment, um, in that limited forum, the participation probably was never going to be in a spot where we'd want it to be, unless you just happen to have a neighbor that was on the ball and just didn't want it. Um, we didn't run into that there. But as far as taking a holistic approach to it, if the zones surrounding a commercial or central business district say, look, we're happy with the way it is, stop messing with it, then at least that gives us a framework and a, and a context to, to operate from.
Mm-hmm, I would agree.
Anything else? Do we have a, do we kind of have a consensus or a direction on how we want to proceed? Once we get the current project completed.
And I, I do, I do have to say, I, I really, really appreciate your understanding of needing to wrap up that uni-
Absolutely.
Unified Development Code. Um, and we are very, very close on that. Um, I just um, sent out the, an advertisement to the newspaper. Uh, so Wednesday, December third at six-thirty, we're going to do a presentation, an overview of that document and kick off a thirty-two plus or minus day um, review period for the general public to comment on what's being proposed. And that all gets taken into consideration and finalized into um, a document then that will be subject to public hearing in front of planning commission, and then their recommendation brought forward to city council for final consideration. Um, so right now, we're looking at um, most, most likely having that in front of city council in March. Um, so right now, we're looking at um, most, most likely having that in front of city council in March. But public review is going to be starting here very shortly.
Excellent. That would be appreciated. Thank you.
You know, I think the, the council should, should be aware too that that while I know you're aware that we've been spending the last three years doing this.
For heaven's sake, we do know that. Yeah.
But I, I think when you see this product that we're, we're going to present to you as our recommendation for this, you're going to, you're going to see that the previous code or the existing code has been clarified. It gets rid of the, uh, duplications, it gets rid of things that conflict with one another. We're, we're, we've spent a lot of time, you know, dealing with that. And when you see this in this recommendation, you're going to say, this is easy to understand. I can understand this, or I was having a problem with the existing code. So I, I just wanted to get my two cents in, say, here it comes. We're doing the best we can. Hope you can accept it when you get it.
Thank you, Larry.
Yep.
Anyone else have anything? I don't want to wind this up if we're not finished, but it seems like we've come to a, a place to move forward.
What was that called? Again, the process?
Oh, it's a sub-area plan. So it's a, it's basically a planning, similar to a comp plan. It's a, a, a planning process to develop a sub-area plan.
Okay.
Uh, if you um, were to Google around, unlike the city of Colorado Springs website, they have had sub-area plans for decades within that city. Um, also like any of your larger cities. But it's a, a very common useful tool. It said it allows you to get uh, the comprehensive plan is very, very general. You know, like we talk thirty thousand feet, this will bring you down to like fifteen thousand feet.
Right.
Excellent.
You know, it's nothing new. We already have one. It's called downtown development. Already. All those things are kind of sub-area plans for a specific area.
Yeah. The overlay district.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So is, is that direction from the council for the planning commission to work that, or, or?
I
What do we, what do we say?
I think that's, there's consensus, if I am looking at everyone's face saying yes, that we have consensus for the council to direct the staff to move forward. Once the current project is complete.
Yeah.
To move forward with that process.
Sub-area plan.
Yes.
We will, we will look at, at, you know, it probably Aprilish, um, looking at what does that process need to look like? Um, what additional resources do we potentially need to do that? Um, it's, we'll, we'll, I'm sure be back in touch with you in terms of how we are suggesting to go about accomplishing that.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, everything clear as mud? All right then, it's time for dessert. And we will reconvene at six P M. for the regular council meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. Thank you, planning commission, for playing with us today. You bet.